Hi.
Hi, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Uh, don't see you.
I think Mari's there.
Oh, we got the good seat. Oh, look at this guy. I'm sorry.
Are we all here?
Did you want to open?
Oh, oh, no, that's fine. I think we're all here. I apologize for us being a few minutes late. Thanks, everyone, for being here. I'm reconvening the public session and just wanted to comment on a couple of topical things in the district right now. The first is many are aware that we have several times for many years in the past done some international trips. A trip to the Dominican Republic is one that we did several years before the pandemic. Then we took a break from all international trips during the pandemic and slowly we've been trying to bring some of them back. We're not able to run that trip as a school-sponsored trip this year, but we applaud a group of parents who are stepping up to make the trip happen for the students this winter. The trip, you know, as many have pointed out, has been a very special and transformative experience. It's been a great illustration for our students of engaged citizenship, as many have recognized. And we do hope these students will have these kinds of opportunities going forward. There are many other ways to learn about and engage in engaged citizenship here in Bronxville, and just to name a few, I'm sure we all have seen the article in my hometown Bronxville and I think in Bronco Beat about Simos Dimas, a high school student who founded an organization that provides college tours for students who might not otherwise be able to get to see college campuses. He's very much kind of engaged the world outside of Bronxville to open up others' worlds and his as well. In fact, I think he was recognized recently with a Westchester Youth Service Award for that work. There's also an organization called TASSL, and a couple of us have children who were involved with that organization in high school. Your daughters may still be. For those who don't know what that organization does, it's a school club, and they tutor Cambodian students in English remotely, I think over Zoom. My daughter was involved in that group, and I will always remember and she will always treasure the feedback she got from those students and how grateful they were for the time that she spent tutoring them in English. So the district will continue to make some really great and special opportunities available to students in engaged citizenship. The, just a reminder that we are reviewing tenure candidates. The board is hearing about tenure candidates. It's not too late to provide feedback by March 1st. Again, whether in a formal written letter or if you're more comfortable reaching out to an administrator to have a conversation, it's a very important process. I would also just call attention to the tenure letter where not only are candidates who are eligible currently for promotion for tenure are listed, but also what we call probationary candidates who are on the pathway. They're a few years away from tenure, but the earlier that we get feedback about those candidates, the better so that they can be coached and improve in any areas they require improvement. So thanks, everyone, for your engagement in the tenure process. And I guess the last thing is we will be talking about the school calendar for next year a little bit later in the agenda. There's always lots of questions out there. Why two weeks this year? Why two weeks next year? How does snow days work, et cetera, et cetera? It's always common chatter, and Dr. Kelly will be, I think, addressing some of the very thoughtful consideration that goes into the development of the calendar each year. So that's it. We have minutes to approve from the last meeting, December 18th. Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes? If there's none, could we have a motion to you? Motion?
Second.
All in favor. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you, especially all the students that are here, and we're going to get to you in just a few minutes. I wanted to wish everybody a Happy New Year, welcome you back. I hope everybody enjoyed their winter break and they found it both relaxing as well as rejuvenating. Our students continue to impress. We have a high school student, Victoria McEnroe, who's been named the Journal News as Low-Hud Player of the Year for girls tennis. And both Hannah Shamish and Annette Danny was named Honorable Mention. So congratulations to all three of those players and to their coach, Mr. Steve Klerfeld. Rehearsals have begun for our high school musical production of Curtains. It's a whodunit mystery, which actually starred David Hyde Pierce when it was on Broadway. Curtains will be in our auditorium on February 8th, 9th, and 10th, and we look forward to seeing all of you there at this production. In middle school, Mr. Joe McCora, our middle school principal, will be welcoming back Ms. Janelle Burley Hamilton. Ms. Hamilton is an expert in the field of internet safety and travels across the country, leading workshops for students and parents to help ensure that they can keep our children safe. She'll be in person with all of our middle school students on January 23rd, and then we will be hosting her at a virtual evening session on that same day for families. Keep an eye out for that Zoom link from Joe. There were a number of school spirit days in the middle school leading up to winter break, which honestly I believe the faculty enjoyed just as much as our students did. The high school is excited about their book vending machine, which is scheduled to arrive in the next month or so, thanks to a foundation grant submitted by Principal Ricky Adams and Assistant Principal Anthony Vaglica, and this will complement their B3 program. Students will be able to earn books from the vending machine after earning Bronco cards for their upstanding behavior. Also, the first grade, as part of our improved project-based learning, created a conflict resolution tool, a peace path of sorts, which is used to help students resolve conflicts that arise outdoors during recess. Students walk the path together and follow prompts, which ask clarifying questions and offer suggestions for how they can resolve their problems. Wouldn't be surprised, given how the pilot is going, if there's a foundation grant on the horizon that would more permanently add the resolution pathway to the blacktop area. And the elementary school play Hercules is underway. The shows are scheduled for Saturday and Sunday, January 27th and 28th. So kudos to everyone in our schools who continue to strive and work so hard. Thank you. Shay?
Well, you covered part of it with the play, but there isn't much updates because we haven't really had much school, which I'm kind of grateful for, but we had the two-week-long break, which was really nice, and then the snow day, delayed opening. Maybe a snow day tomorrow. We've had a lot of successful winter sports teams go, and playoffs are coming up soon, especially for basketball. Additionally, the basketball clinics they've been running every weekend have been going really well. Varsity players interact with, I think it's first to third grade, maybe a little younger, maybe a little older, and they teach them how to play basketball. And then we also, SFL leaders recently met with Mr. Ashley and Ms. Meyer to discuss AI policies and how we're going to integrate that into the school, because obviously it's something that's kind of unavoidable, so we need to, we're putting together a committee of students and, I think, teachers to work out how to use it as a tool rather than cheating or just completely disregard it. Coming up, we have midterms week next week for high school, which is stressful, but it will mark the end of the first semester, and then we can move on with the next one. We have candy grams coming up, which are hosted by the SFL, and basically every student in the high school gets a little bag of candy, and then every student in the high school can also send a message to anyone they want, any of their friends, anyone like, anyone they like, and everyone gets at least one message. And then we also have a senior trip to bowling coming up and new freshman transition plans. That's about it.
Thank you, Shay. As the board, and I have made a commitment this year at our public meetings to emphasize the Bronxville Promise in Action, and tonight we have that in the disposition of leadership. And I'm going to ask Dr. Kepke to introduce middle school and high school students who have come to join us and to share with our community how the disposition of leadership plays out for them in school.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. So it's my pleasure this evening to introduce the Bronxville Promise in Action with a focus on leadership. Tonight, you will hear from two groups of students, our elementary student council members, led by their advisor, Ms. Susan Engelhardt, as well as our middle school ambassadors, which is a new program in which seventh and eighth graders are helping orient our students in fifth grade to middle school, which is led by Joe McCora. According to the promise, leading is acting and inspiring others towards a positive outcome. Tonight, you will hear themes of advocacy and humility, which we define working without the need for credit and praise. In addition, the heart of the promise is reflected in this student work, as middle school ambassadors help by showing empathy to fifth-grade students who are transitioning to middle school, and our elementary school council engaging in engaged citizenship, where students take action through acts of charity. I also believe you will see how these programs create a sense of community and belonging in each school as well as across the elementary and middle school. So it's my pleasure tonight to welcome the elementary school council members to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Parker Noll, and I'm a fifth-grade student who proudly represents the Bronxville School Elementary Student Council.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maddie Carey, and it is an honor to speak before you tonight.
Hello. My name is Benjamin Gani.
My name is Drew Pagano. We are here to share with you a bit about our work as student council representatives.
Student Council is a student committee made up of fifth graders who are eager to dedicate their time and interpersonal skills towards Bronxville Elementary School and the Bronxville Promise. Ms. Engelhardt is our committee lead teacher, who works towards including all members in morning announcements, B3 assemblies, elementary council meetings, or monthly elementary school themes, and other monthly initiatives that extend beyond our school community.
The student council leads monthly school themes. Each month, teachers and students are asked to discuss an important quality or value that Bronxville Elementary considers an integral part of our class and school community. For example, in September, classes submitted their big three ideas about building and fostering a peaceful, productive school and class community. Big Three is a list that reflects a class's top three ideas for a given theme.
School theme and other initiatives are shared on the morning announcements for the entire school to hear. While classes come up with many different big three ideas within their classrooms, such as bravery, belonging, acceptance, kindness, perseverance, and friendship, we notice a common theme. Our most common big threes include our B3, respect, responsibility, and safety.
Each month, the student council also plans, prepares, and leads our school's B3 assemblies. The assemblies allow the student council to promote and reinforce our school initiatives that are directly related to monthly themes and the Bronxville Promise. In October, the student council shared ways that teachers and students can have conversations about what courage looks like and why it is important to show courage. As you can see, our classes created definitions of what courage is. This slide displays a few examples.
Also, in October, student council helped facilitate the Memorial Day logo contest. This fun annual contest is an exciting event that allows elementary students the opportunity to design a logo for Memorial Day. This was the committee's first opportunity to leave beyond our school theme. Shortly after the logo contest, student council facilitated the Feeding Westchester Halloween Candy Drive. Student council members volunteered their time outside of the school day to receive candy donations at the Canopy for the three days following Halloween. We proudly collected hundreds of pounds of candy to donate to Feeding Westchester.
In November, the student council led discussions and an assembly on gratitude. Each class made a list of the three most important things on gratitude and what they are grateful for. We found many commonalities across classes and grades. As you can see, classes shared what they are grateful for: their education, that would not be possible without the people in this room; their families, friends, and teachers; their town, school, and community; and their health. In addition to the candy drive, the student council also led another very important drive for Feeding Westchester in November for many years. The student council has contributed to Feeding Westchester's holiday food drive for a long time. Student council representatives volunteered to collect food donations from the school community each morning for two weeks. We successfully collected 944 pounds of goods, which is equivalent to 787 meals for our neighbors in need.
In December, the committee led yet another meaningful drive for Marine Corp's Toys for Tots. This program provides gifts to disadvantaged children in the U.S. Our gifts serve local communities, and after a two-week collection, we were able to donate a substantial amount of toys for children in neighboring communities. Some of our upcoming events include Valentine's for Veterans, which will support our school theme of empathy in the month of February. In April, for our Engaged Citizenship School theme, student council will highlight Earth Day awareness through our second-use plastic collection for Next Treks and Walk the School Week, and our overarching goal, belonging. As you can see, the student council leads many initiatives that make a difference to our school and our community.
In addition, the student council has been at the heart of many school improvements. A few years ago, student council members had the idea of proving recess in our playground from a project that took place in first grade. Council members brought the idea to Mr. Vaglica, and he worked on it with Ms. Adams and the council members at the time to write a grant to improve the blacktop area outside of the playground. And from there, the thermoplastic surface was born, including four square courts, obscotch, bicycle course, long jump area, and other playful surfaces. More recently, the student council brought the idea of another Gaga pit and a new basketball hoop. Those additions were added to the playground. The question is, what will be next? I choose student council because I want the opportunity to organize my classmates and friends to do good things for other people.
I choose student council because I feel this is a good opportunity to become a better public speaker and give me more chances to lead.
I choose student council because I am loyal and 100% committed to the things I am passionate about, like student council.
I chose student council because as a student council member, I am enthusiastic about educating and teaching others. We would like to thank you for allowing us to be part of the meeting tonight.
And before you begin, Izzy and Logan, I have just a heartfelt thank you to the four of you that took courage to stand before us and what beautiful characteristics of leadership you showed us this evening. And also, Susan and Anthony, thank you for all your support of the students. Izzy and Logan?
Good evening. I'm an eighth-grade ambassador, and my name's Izzy.
Good evening. I'm also an eighth-grade ambassador, and my name's Logan. So what is the ambassador program? Ambassador program is comprised of experienced students helping younger students get ready for middle school. Seventh and eighth graders showing leadership and compassion for our younger students. It's also an attempt on our part as a school to help students who go to Bronxville Elementary School feel confident about coming to middle school. And finally, it takes the anxiety out of a big transition.
Let's talk about middle school. Middle school is the second biggest transition in a student's and parent's academic life and their school journey. The first is kindergarten. It is a time of tremendous growth. Students will grow more physically and emotionally in these three years than they have in any three-year period of their lives. We consider middle school to be a time of wonder. It's a time to develop good habits and a time of challenge.
Middle school is a bridge. The term middle school is a bridge means that it's, middle school is the connection point from elementary school to high school to set kids up for success.
The challenges of a middle school transition. Education Week article by Justin Blandorf dated April 2nd, 2023 speaks of some of these challenges. Ambassador suggestions to ease this transition involve making social connections. Our ambassadors work hard on making connections with fifth graders by speaking of middle school from a student perspective and easing any tensions or concerns they may have.
We do all the little things before they get here. We go back to elementary school and see our fifth-grade teachers. We show the students everything they need to know about middle school. We give them tours of the middle school, and our teachers take time to say hello. We teach them how to read a schedule. We give them their lock and show them how to use it. There's even a future award-winning video made to show kids how to open a lock. Students keep their locks all summer so they can practice.
Our goal as ambassadors, our goal as ambassadors is to let the fifth graders see our middle school for what it is, a place where people care of each other and a place where people are there for each other. This is what Bronxville Middle School is all about.
This has led to positive transitional change. The ambassador work has led to an earlier relationship beginning with our elementary school families. This also allows parent transition to also begin sooner. The ambassadors now take part in speaking at a new middle school parent orientation. This is an in-person meeting where parents meet with the ambassadors as well as staff and have the opportunity to tour the building.
Timeline and evolution. The ambassador's program is made for seventh and eighth graders. In 2023 and 2020, sorry, in 2022 and in 2023, we started working with a small but dedicated group of seventh and eighth graders. Classroom visits were towards the end of the school year. In 2023 and 2024, 75 students signed up to be ambassadors. This year, we will have meetings with students about their world language and music choices. We will have lunch, we will have lunch with the fifth graders, and post-day tests, we will have classroom visits, schools of the middle school, tours of the middle school, and teach them how to use their locks. In 2024 and 2025, we will sign each sixth grader with a seventh-grade buddy.
Thank you for letting us be here tonight.
That was excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, so this is typically the board meeting in January, where I present a draft calendar for the 24-25 school year. So that's what I have before all of you this evening. There are a couple of requirements that I'll just remind you all of. We're required to have 182 student days, 186 teacher days, and those, that four-day difference are professional development days for the faculty. So what you see before you is a draft calendar. This is suggesting that we have two of the professional development days prior to Labor Day. Again, that's just for teachers, and that would be something that the district would have to engage in negotiations with the teachers' union, because current contract language does state that we can't start for September 1st. But they have expressed interest in starting because they'd rather spend those days before the school year and get ready for the school year than at the end of June, when school is over. So that's something to consider. Typical holidays that we see annually that are required, if they fall during the school week, we have the Jewish holidays in October, we have Columbus Day, Veterans Day, of course, Thanksgiving, and then we have the winter holidays. There's Martin Luther King Jr. Day. This is the first year that the state is requiring all public schools to celebrate and not have school on the Lunar New Year, so that will be new in the 24-25 calendar. And then spring recess, which in next year's calendar does coincide with both Easter and Passover. There's, of course, Memorial Day, and a requirement that went into play, I think, next year will be the third year, is Juneteenth. So the way that it falls, you see two weeks over the winter break again. And the other requirement to keep in mind, which many parents are dissatisfied with, public school goes later in New York State, and that's because of the Regents exams, which are New York State exams in the high school, and they are graduation requirements. So we don't really have flexibility with the end date because New York State Education Department determines when those exams will be given. And I don't want to bifurcate our calendar and have three separate school calendars. I feel strongly that we should have one district calendar. So lots for you to consider. I'm not asking you to vote on it this evening, but happy to hear your feedback, both now and again at the February board meeting.
So one question we get from time to time is, will there always be a two-week break over the winter holidays?
No. So this year there was, but the prior couple of years there was not. It was closer to like a week and a half, a week and two days, a week and three days. And honestly, it really depends on where December 25th falls, and then we kind of back it up from there. So given that, like this year, it falls in the middle of the week, that allows us to take that full week and the week after.
And do we still have snow days built into the calendar?
We do. So there are six snow days actually built into the calendar. We have never used all six, so don't get too excited. And I hope not on my watch, we will use all six. So there are six built in, where we can take the six and we don't have to come back later in June or take what the calendar indicates is we would, if we get to a seventh school snow day, we would start chipping away at the April break, 1st April, 15th, and 16th and 17th.
And some school districts will do remote instruction on a snow day. Is that something that we would do in the future? I mean, I'm sorry, I know the answer to that question. It's a rhetorical question, but often asked.
Right. So we will not engage in remote learning. Snow days will be a snow day. Now, I might change my mind if we get to a seventh snow day, but again, we're not going to, so they will be true snow days up until that time.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for now?
We have Easter Monday if we don't use the snow days.
Yes, so there is, that was negotiated in the teacher contract, and if we don't And if we don't use four snow days, then we have one give-back day. And the last couple of years, it has been the Monday after the spring break. So as we get closer this year, because we first have to see if we use four, so by March, I would say we would know because hopefully by then the snow will have settled down by the end of March and we can make that decision. So we are open to feedback. Again, the board is not going to be asked to adopt this calendar until next month. So don't hesitate to give either board members or certainly directly to me any feedback that you have.
Thank you.
Sure. So I'm very excited to share with the community a tenure recommendation. This is an off-cycle recommendation, if you will, of one of our teacher assistants who works in one of our special education classes. It's at a non-traditional point in time because when she was initially hired, she was hired mid-year. So this is literally the four-year anniversary of her probationary period. And we would like to recommend Marissa Kellard as teacher assistant in the Bronxville School, and her tenure would be effective March 14th. And it's our pleasure, this is Christine Doud, our Director of Pupil Personnel Services, wrote her recommendation that it is her distinct pleasure to recommend Marissa Kellard for tenure in the area of teaching assistant. She has served her four-year probationary period. She's in a highly unique position in that it demands expertise in teaching young adults with developmental disabilities and behavioral disorders. Prior to becoming a teacher assistant, Marissa served as a teacher aide in the district. She obtained her bachelor's degree in early childhood education and also holds a master's degree in special education. Marissa is responsible for supporting the students in her class who require intensive intervention to learn. She assists the lead teacher in coordinating instruction across multiple domains, including language, cognitive, reading, writing, math, social, adaptive, fine and gross motor, behavior, as well as pre-vocational and vocational skills. Marissa has also supported her students in participating in extensive community-based opportunities. And that has resulted in our students being more prepared for life after graduation. Marissa is caring, she's compassionate, and the students respond so well to her teaching style. She is well-respected by parents, and she has been successful at leading the room when the classroom teacher is absent or in professional development. So it is with great pride that Christine Doud and I recommend Marissa Kellard for tenure.
Do we vote separately on this item? Yeah, yeah. Could we have a motion to approve this tenure candidate? And a second from Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, congratulations.
Congratulations to Marissa.
And then I want to bring your attention to a side letter that was negotiated between the district and the teachers. And it's an early notification teacher retirement incentive. The purpose of the district offering this and for the board to consider it this evening is that it will result in a significant cost savings in next year's budget. And as we look at some of the preliminary numbers in terms of our costs and then in terms of where our tax cap is, there is quite a gap. And we feel very strongly that we should be at the tax cap and not above it. You know, the offering these incentives are always a double-edged sword because although the district will have some cost savings, inevitably we're going to be losing some legends. And you know, these are faculty members that are considering retirement within the next year or so anyway. But it still will be a significant loss. And the third purpose is really to be able to get out into interviews to start recruiting and interviewing early. So the deadline for teachers to notify us would be February 1st. And that does allow us to get out early and to find the best candidates out there. So that is a resolution this evening on the personnel agenda. The other agenda items include parent leaves, medical leaves. As a result of the medical leaves, some overages for her colleagues to cover. As a result of the parent leave, we do have a leave replacement in line. We do have a teacher aide resignation, as well as an appointment of a new teacher aide. And then we also have a resignation of one of our school nurses. And we are close to being able to secure a replacement. And then we have an addition of an athletic supervision appointment, as well as a new coach. And we did make a few revisions to both the winter and spring coaching rosters. Happy to take any questions.
If there's no questions, could we have a motion to approve items B through S on the personnel agenda?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
The board has received the copy of the December financial summary. The forecast is unchanged from the prior month. We continue to see expenditures forecasted near break-even with the exception of some salary savings due to staff turnover and vacancies. And I meant, all other expenditure items should pretty much break-even for the rest of the year. The good news is on the revenue side, it continues to project a surplus from non-resident student tuition, special education tuition, and interest earnings, which is fortunate because we can forecast over $600,000 in revenue surplus alone. The combined surplus is over $700,000 projected at the moment. And you know, our first draft of our budget always includes a $500,000 allocation from fund balance to offset the tax levy. So we're in good shape to do that this year without reducing our current financial position. So you know, we're in decent shape this year. And that's not going to be one of our best years, but you know, it's certainly not one of our tightest years either. And the board at the last meeting, or just before the last meeting, received the first draft of the budget. And it looks like our tax cap will be in the 2.15% range. Can you get the whole thing up there, Pam? Thanks. Just keep hitting buttons till it's done. The proposed, the first draft of the proposed budget's about $54.5 million. Of that, 5.8 million is revenue other than property tax, which leaves us about $48.7 million to make up. And then from that, we're allocating about $500,000 from our fund balance, which is really most of our surplus projected for the current year. And that reduces our tax levy to about $48.3 million, which is about a 3.6% increase. And our cap is about 2.19, in that range, which is almost a $700,000 nut that we have to make up in order to hit the cap. And we'll go over that in detail at 9:00 AM on Saturday, January 27th. We'll look at the first draft and discuss possible ways to meet the cap because we feel we can meet the cap. And I think the retirement incentive was a nice, will be a nice boost to getting us there. But there's more work to be done. And you know, I think it's interesting to note that our cap is roughly half the rate of current inflation. So you know, our costs are going up. So you know, there's going to be some belt tightening.
Yeah. Yeah, and we've been trying to talk about structural changes to the budget. Whether they have a shorter-term impact or whether they better position us for the long term.
Sure.
Things like, you know, health insurance and transportation.
Yep. So we'll talk more about it on Saturday morning, January 27th. Be there.
Thank you, Dan.
I have a couple of financial action items. In the spirit of Bronxville generosity, we have two donations. One, a French horn from the Beerworth family, from a former student and a family of a former board member. A very nice French horn, which Uma, our band teacher, is really excited to get. And then we have a foundation donation for two administrators to observe and study in Finland for a week in April to come back with some ideas of what the Finns are doing over there and if there's anything we can learn from them. And I believe that was approved at the Tuesday Foundation meeting?
That's right.
So you know, with our eternal gratitude to both our residents and our foundation, we'd love to recommend the board accepting both donations.
That's so generous of the Beerworth family. You know, Jack being a former board member. Should we take them one at a time? Okay. And the Finland trip is fascinating. I mean, the foundation is so thoughtful about these grant applications, especially when it comes to travel and anything off-site. I remember from my days as the liaison. So I'm sure this one is going to be very, very informative. In fact, I started Googling Finnish education system. It sounds like you did too, maybe Pete. There's a very good article in, I think, like the Smithsonian Magazine about the Finnish education system and why they've been so successful. So I'm sure we're going to bring back a lot of really important learning.
It was interesting watching the guy, I guess, you know, the sponsor of the trip, where so much of their learning is project-based. And you know, we've already started doing a lot. So it's going to be interesting.
Yeah, no homework in Finland, so. Remember that. Does anybody have any questions or observations?
Well, thank you to the foundation.
Yes.
We're definitely excited to bring back the information. And we've read about it, but we're going to see it in action. And I think it's going to be a really appropriate course of study for us at this point in our career.
That's great. Yes, thank you very much to the foundation. So if there's no questions, the Board of Education, which wishes to accept with much gratitude this off-cycle grant from the Bronxville School Foundation, could we have a motion to, oh, we're going to approve them both. Motion to approve both of these grants?
A.
A and B.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Lucky us.
Moving on to facilities, as I mentioned last month, we, there's a lot going on despite it being the winter. Our outdoor classroom is complete. They're demobilizing. They've moved all equipment out. Looks really nice. Unfortunately, it's covered in snow at the moment. But we will add some more landscaping in the spring when things thaw out a little bit. But we're very happy with both the way that worked out and the contractor we used. No change orders, none of one, which is great. Very rare for any kind of project for that to happen. So we're looking forward to hopefully dealing with them or at least getting them to bid on our future projects. We're going to schedule a facilities committee meeting in the near future to review the Bronxville flood pump enclosure. We are awaiting schematic drawings from our architect and a ballpark figure, an estimate by this contractor we used for the outdoor classroom, just to make sure we're firm in our budget numbers when we get the schematic drawings. And then we have just received schematic drawings, I believe it was today or yesterday, on the security vestibule and office that we're planning by the Pond Field entrance. We have security vestibules in the elementary entrance and in the atrium entrance. So this will complete kind of our exterior security, which, you know, we're really looking forward to. And let's see, we have a draft of our energy study. It's 90-plus pages. We'll be talking a little bit about that. And then we're also reviewing and updating the facilities use policy and regulations, which, you know, probably haven't been updated in about 30 years. So we're looking forward to that. And then we're continuing to prioritize our five-year plan. And what we're envisioning is probably a small project that might be on the referendum that would include a security vestibule, perhaps another outdoor classroom, and a flood pump enclosure to be on the referendum this spring. And then the prioritization of the five-year plan, which would, you know, this project is probably going to be looking out three, four years in the future. And it's going to be ongoing for a few years when it happens. And this is, you know, last project we had, big project, you know, we had a few fun things in there like the atrium and the Learning Commons. And this next project is not fun stuff. It's bricks and steel that are all 100 years old that are really expensive to replace. But you know, as stewards of the 100-year-old building, we have to do it.
And windows, I think, too?
Yeah, windows.
And the energy audit, we got that, right?
We do have a draft. It has, the final, has not been certified by NYSERTA yet, but it should be relatively unchanged from the draft.
Okay. And do we think that's going to result in?
You know, we, it's going to tell us we could use new windows, but our, you know, we did LED lighting maybe five years, five, six years ago. You know, all the lights in the building are LED. It might tell us we can replace a boiler or something like that. I still have not had a chance to read through it, but we definitely need windows. We all know that. And Mike Lee is actually exploring a lower-cost window replacement for at least the C wing, I believe. But a lot of the windows in the D wing, the elementary school, we also need unit ventilators in that part of the building. And that's just going to be, that's going to be a bear in the five-year plan in the large, you know, the large project coming down the pike. A lot of those are, you know, 30, 40 years old.
Okay.
Always something in a 100-year-old building.
So Facilities Committee will have a chance to review the security vestibule?
Yep, and you know, maybe we'll have a schematic design for the pump enclosure by then as well.
Okay.
Because we need those in order for contractors to have something to bid on. Because we need those in order for contractors to have something to bid on.
Yeah. Do we need, I guess, yeah, we need bids before the referendum. Yeah.
No, we approved, we, we approved the referendum based on a budget. We actually can't bid until the referendum is done.
Oh, yeah.
We have authorization for funding.
Dan, did you get to test out the alternate water?
Yes, yes. We had a rain event, you know, we're, we're considering putting in a Mike Lee suite because he spent six nights in the building so far this year overnight. The last rain incident, no issues. We diverted up the groundwater that was penetrating our sewage system. We diverted that up to Pond Field during the incident, no issues. So we're, we're very excited about that.
That's great. Thank you. An agreement to?
No, no items, no action items.
Okay. Other action item, there's a student service agreement that has been discussed with the board in executive session, and I ask the board to consider 8A. Yep. So we've all had an opportunity to review and discuss and ask questions in executive session. So could we have a motion to approve this agreement?
So move.
All in favor. And then we have a second reading of a policy. We have committed to making sure that any policies that are required are certainly reviewed by the board as well as policies that haven't been reviewed in quite some time. This policy, which is our second reading this evening, is a new requirement. Just came out, I want to say in November or December, and it's effective actually this month. And it is, it speaks to workplace violence prevention. So you had an opportunity for a first reading last month. Tonight is the second reading with your consideration. And there was a, says minor revision, and was that that typo that the state corrected?
It was a typo.
Yeah.
Designated on the.
Yep. I don't know if everybody caught that, but the Connie Ford, yeah. It was just like a little word that was missing or something from a sentence.
I think it's up there.
I, I remember it. I don't know if anybody else has a question about it.
Actually, on page two, I F F, and it added the word review and update.
Yep. Yep. It made sense. So be it resolved that the board approves the following policy after a second reading. This is policy 8130.2 on workplace violence prevention. It's a new required policy. Could we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay. All in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, that concludes our formal agenda. We move now to an opportunity for public comment. Just, the board is eager to hear any, anything that anyone wishes to share. We ask that you please identify yourself, state your name as you stand or come to the podium, and you know, tell us a little bit if you're a student or a parent. We generally, with the exception of clarifying facts, don't have a Q and A, but again, I do want to just emphasize, we are eager to hear your comments. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Yes.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Reedy, and I'm here actually on behalf of parents from in the International Service Club. And if you allow me, I'm going to read a statement.
Yes.
That some parents are just like, okay. So in 2005, the first trip with Bridges to Community for the Bronxville School took place. Since then, other than during COVID, there has been at least one trip per year and mostly in the year. In fall 2022, the International Service Club, we launched the program and the students had the trip back on schedule in April 22. It was a life-changing experience for them. In the hope of going back in 2024, the club promoted their actions through this organization and fundraised enough money to cover the cost of building a house for family living. These folks of students from the club were called during the Twisted Crosses to present a project in support of one of the Bronxville Promise to engage the world. During this same period, the administration decided to pause the trip the students had been planning due to international travel, safety issues, and concerns. But we don't know more details about what are these concerns. This decision was communicated to the kids on Tuesday, December 19, and with the parents on December 21, just before the break. In front of that decision, the children were devastated, disappointed, confused, and felt left out since another international trip was still on schedule. Our understanding is that the school suggested they find an alternate pathway to achieve their club's international service directive. Given that the planning for 2023 trip was planned in the fall of '22, the club had a very short timeframe to plan something to happen during spring break '24. With such a tight timing, a group of parents independently of the school decided to pursue the school, the Bronxville School tradition to work with Bridges to Community and took over the organization of the trip so that we could put a Band-Aid on their distress. While taking the time to build the future, we imagined version of an international service trip. Luckily, a slot for that trip was available to be reserved, but had to be confirmed booked by this month, January 22nd. As parents, we saw the value in such a trip for our achievement to do good in the world with their own hard work instead of just donate to fix a problem and sit down comfortably in their comfort zone at home. We worked together and were able to get the commitment from 17 families that were wanted, that wanted to participate, and a commitment from three parents that they would go as chaperones for the trip. For your information, the requests from the community for that trip were over capacity. All of this was organized and preserved in less than a week. Since several parents with travel to the Dominican Republic to help students build the house their three weeks built, this March, we will have an opportunity to assess the hard work of our achievement, the impact of their, of their serving experience, and the safety of that trip. We hope that our experience on the ground as parents and students could help the administration and the board to reimagine an international service trip going forward. We also want to underline the fact that this program is the only one offering an opportunity to practice their Spanish language skills in school versus Montreal and also for French students. We believe this trip is fundamental for our community to teach high schoolers the benefit of the survey, to inspire them for their college application, and to improve their Spanish language. We are here today to offer our time to students and parents to discuss how to evolve the trip to make it better for the students of that club and others who are willing to serve abroad and to represent the Bronxville School in an extremely gracious manner. Well, if you want more information about the trip and its benefits, I mean, the students are just about to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? And do we have anyone in the queue? No one?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you again for taking the time to share your thoughts and your statement with us. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming to the board meeting. And do you want to say something?
I would like to say, during the meetings, we could like, discuss this idea of the Bronxville Promise. And I would just like to say that the Bronxville community has a pride of the upbringing of the Bronxville Promise. And we're taught in school how to embody the promise, which consists of four components, which is to lead, to engage, to engage the world, to innovate, and to think critically. And last time I checked, this was right before the break, so I don't know if this has been updated, but when we went to the Dominican Republic, and us, to the Dominican Republic, out of this, and some of them weren't available, but a lot of them, through support, went there. We did only embody of what we lifted, and we merged with the community so different from ours, and learned about their culture and their challenges, and learned how to adapt to our environment, but also how to help them. And this trip, it was challenging, I can't think of like, those house thoughts, especially seventeen. But we had the support of Ms. Ragno and Ms. Agarabi, which I could go on and on about how incredible they both are. And I feel like while it was challenging, our friendships, we formed friendships closer to any friendships that like, would form regularly in school. We formed discipline, how to understand others, and we gave a home to a family that deserved it. And this experience will live on with us for a very long time. I feel like the trip, while it's too late to reevaluate right now, it was cool. I believe that it should have been a decision spoken with the kids of the perspective because it really crushed all of us, especially the way this was done, because it was done a couple of days before the break. And we were just left with that, and we had, we hadn't, we didn't think it was anything wrong with it. We actually thought it was such an incredible trip because we came back and we learned so much about other people, but we also learned Bronxville places, this idea of adversity and like the community that engages everyone. But that's literally what we did, we embodied the promise, we lifted, and I think it's just an experience that both mattered to us more than anything, and the teachers more than anything that we were in school. And I.
Thank you very much. And can I just ask that you identify yourself?
Josephine Reedy.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Josephine. Thank you again for taking the time to share your thoughts, and we hear you, we understand your disappointment. We appreciate your attendance at the meeting. If there are no further comments, then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
All in favor.